All to order. The, uh, planning zoning meeting, West Barrow, is Tuesday, 3:10. The second order of business is the election of Chair and Vice Chair.
Would you like them as a one motion or separate motions?
Let's do one motion.
Okay, I'd make a motion for Chair as Joe Kuhlbe continue on and for Vice Chair, Mr. Dodds.
I'll second that.
It has been moved and seconded to say we prefer Chair and Vice Chair for COVID-2023. Any other discussion? Right above. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. The agenda for everyone right now shows that item number eight is, uh, A23-4. However, this has been requested to be continued, uh, because insufficient, uh, submittal of the paperwork, I believe. Just gotta get caught up. So, uh, as a courtesy, uh, I think we will bring this up to the front of the agenda. Discuss this next. I will open it up for a public, uh, hearing, even though not all the information is available. Anybody that is here for that, we will allow public comment. But this will be continued and further discussed in our February 14th meeting. So, I will skip down to item eight. A23-4, Sand Hills Sixth Edition. Staff, you want to say anything to open this?
Don't, I don't think so. So, yeah, item eight is the Sand Hills Sixth Edition. So, anybody that is in attendance tonight that would like to speak to that item-
Is there anybody here that had came, uh, come for that title? Alright, we've, yes, sir?
I did, I learned off there.
Do you wish to, uh, provide comments or input?
I won't yet.
It's, the details will be for next month, you know, for next month's meeting and provided prior to.
Then I'll attend that meeting. Are you gonna do any motions or anything on this?
Uh, if, if nobody has any comments, we're just going to continue it. We're not gonna take any motion. We're just gonna continue till next month, what would be discussed and acted upon at that point after full information is available.
And the plans were to rezone some of the areas?
Uh, honestly, I don't know, because I haven't seen anything.
Okay.
If I may.
Yes, you may.
If you'd like to follow up with planning department staff, we can provide you with that information at a time. So, anytime tomorrow, any business hours.
It seemed like it was gonna be some rezone today. I'm all for, uh, people progress and everything. There's still some residents left out there. We've been there about seven years and our specials have increased. I mean, my, uh, taxes were $500 on my lot and now they're $5,000 in the last seven years. I mean, these people have to be dealt with, we have to be dealt with. I'll, you know, I mean, that's only fair. It's like you guys just kind of, or somebody did, I can't say you guys. Somebody kind of forgot about us or swept us under the rug, so to speak.
Yeah, and as I mentioned, the details of what this, uh, submittal is, uh, doing, I don't know at this point. So, apologize for it being put on the agenda today without it being sufficiently prepared for. It will be discussed at the next meeting, which is February 14th.
February 14th, same time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, will we get a letter? A reminder letter or?
Uh, we will not, we do not typically send out reminder letters. But if, like I said, if you want to contact staff, we can provide you all the details and be certainly happy to sit down with you, um, in advance of the meeting.
I'll remember that day, I'll be here at 5:30, February 14th. That sounds like Valentine's Day.
It is Valentine's, yeah. Alright, thank you, sir. Apologize for the, uh, change there.
Okay.
Alright, um, skipping back to item number three, approval of the minutes from December 3rd, 15th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as published. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Minutes approved. Item number four, Brooks Harbor First Edition Right-of-Way Access.
Alright. Good afternoon. Uh, item number four is a request for right-of-way access onto Cheyenne Street and 26th Avenue West. I will just pull up, uh, aerial map here quick. Yeah. Subject property is located in a lot, or excuse me, Block One, Lot Three, Block One. On the wrong page here. Brooks Harbor First Edition. And so essentially what's in front of you here tonight is a request for two access points onto controlled access rates-of-way. Uh, one request is for a right-in access from Cheyenne Street, um, indicated with this red box on the, the map here. And the second request is for a full access, uh, full driveway access onto 26th Avenue West, which is a collector street on the south side of the subject property. The, uh, Title II of the city ordinances requires a city commission approval upon recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission in order to, um, open up, uh, a controlled access driveway along a controlled access street, uh, with Cheyenne Street and 26th Avenue are both, um, fully access-controlled on the east side and the south side of the, the block. Uh, and they have, and ever since the property was originally plotted in, in 2013. Included in your packet, I think it's the last attachment, is just a kind of an example, uh, site plan of, of conceptual site, site plan anyway, of one, um, potential development proposal for this property. Uh, you can see that right-in only, uh, turn lane from Cheyenne Street, from southbound Cheyenne Street into the subject property. And then the full access, um, onto 26th Avenue, approximately, approximately, approximately mid-block along 26th Avenue. Uh, staff has reviewed the requests and, um, has identified, uh, a few different concerns with, uh, with both access locations. Uh, I'll start with the access point onto Cheyenne Street. Uh, staff does have concerns that this creates a high-speed conflict with an existing shared-use path. Looking on the west side of Cheyenne Street, which you can see in the, the underlying aerial image here. And then, uh, it was noted that it would be difficult to prevent illegal right-out turns. And so the concept here is that it's right-in only, so only incoming traffic from Cheyenne Street could enter. There would be signage preventing, uh, telling folks not to try and exit out onto Cheyenne using that, uh, that driveway location. However, in practice, that's hard to, um, police, it's hard to prevent people from, from doing it anyway, essentially. Uh, it also introduces an additional access point onto Cheyenne, introduces an, uh, an additional opportunity for folks to, you know, break, um, essentially mid-block along Cheyenne Street, uh, which is, uh, posted at 35 miles per hour. So relatively, you know, higher speeds along an arterial street like Cheyenne Street. Um, and so there is, uh, relatively easy access into the property from, uh, 24th Avenue, for example. Folks can, southbound traffic can take a right onto 24th Avenue and then a, a simple left turn into, um, into the subject property. Or they can take 26th Avenue to, to enter the subject property, for example. Um, as for, uh, 26th Avenue, the proposed access there, uh, there's really, uh, uh, kind of a handful of different issues that are all kind of, going on in this situation. So I'm gonna do my best to, to kind of talk, talk through some of these. Maybe just to start with, I'll kind of zoom back out to this, this photo here. Uh, 26th Avenue in its current condition, um, does have, uh, existing issues primarily during rush hour traffic during the, the AM, uh, peak period, where a majority of the, the neighborhood to the west of the subject property, um, utilizes 26th Avenue to enter onto Cheyenne Street. That being a controlled, uh, traffic-controlled intersection onto Cheyenne Street. A majority of that traffic, as they're going to work, are typically looking to get up, um, to the north and, and a lot of them onto the interstate to travel throughout the metro area. And so during, um, particularly during that, that peak AM, um, period, there is traffic queuing all the way back. In some instances, past, uh, Fifth Street West, uh, according to our, our traffic engineer. Uh, and so that, that creates a situation where it's hard for, or be challenging for folks looking to turn, um, south into the eastbound travel lane, uh, because the queue is, is, that, that access point is essentially blocked by queuing traffic, uh, almost all the time during that, that AM peak period. Uh, throughout the remainder of the day, it's, it's not so much of an issue. It really is just that, that peak, um, period in time where that, that becomes a, a real challenge. And so, um, that existing condition creates that challenge and then adding an access point onto that existing challenge just exacerbates the situation is, is one of the major concerns that, um, that staff noted. Additionally, just with the proximity and, and those, the amount of traffic that utilizes 26th Avenue, uh, it does, uh, including or adding a, a full access intersection at this location does introduce, um, additional conflict points as vehicles have more options to make different turning movements, um, especially if they're crossing, uh, multiple lanes. And so that was the, a big concern there as well. Um, staff did indicate to the applicant that, um, even if an access point were to be approved today, there's no saying that, you know, due to the traffic crashes or different, um, you know, data points down the road, that the city wouldn't be forced to come back in and add a median or something to control, um, access onto that, um, that, that location. Uh, the city had to do something similar with one of the access points into Costco, um, along, I think it's 23rd Avenue, uh, just west of Veterans Boulevard, for example. Included in the, as an attachment to the staff report, um, city, uh, engineering, traffic engineer, um, city engineering did review this. Uh, in addition to that, they did have Bolton and Mink, um, Mike Bittner with Bolton and Mink, who's a, a traffic engineer, uh, take a look at the situation as well. Uh, he did provide a, uh, just a short memo summarizing, um, his assessment of the request, which is included as a, as an attachment, um, to your staff report there. And so ultimately, uh, the city is recommending, um, kind of a, a conditional approval of the access point onto 26th Avenue, under, uh, one of two conditions, um, either, one, the access be right-in right-only, um, controlled by, uh, some type of geometric design of a pork chop driveway. So basically using the, the concrete to control, uh, flows in and out of that, um, that access point. That could be done onsite with the construction of the driveway onto that, um, into the property. Uh, otherwise, the second, um, option would be for, uh, the access to be contingent upon right-of-way modifications to 26th Avenue West. Uh, that would be necessary as determined by the city engineer to mitigate the concerns outlined, uh, within the staff report, uh, which I just, uh, summarized here. Um, and then finally, the, the other access point, the right-in only, uh, from Cheyenne Street, staff would recommend to deny that proposed access location due to the, um, the additional, uh, the concerns that were raised and just the ability to, um, conveniently access the, the property through alternative means. The, uh, I will note on the staff, or, excuse me, on the, uh, on the site plan here, the roadway configuration, a lot of these lanes and things that, that you see, um, indicated on the site plan, those are not existing, um, currently. Uh, this is, uh, the applicant did have a number of conversations with city staff and, um, staff is comfortable again with an access point on the 26th Avenue as long as there are certain things that are, are taken care of. Um, some of which being some added stacking capacity for those left turns from 26th Avenue to, uh, Cheyenne Street in order to reduce some of that queuing length. Um, in addition, there would be, um, a left turn lane from 26th Avenue into the subject property. Uh, currently, there's a, there is no left turn lane and it's only a, a one lane, if you can see my cursor. One lane of travel right here, and so anybody looking to take a left turn into the property would essentially be blocking traffic as they sit and wait to take a left turn, for example. And so, um, there is some modifications that could be made to 26th Avenue as well as the intersection of 26th and Cheyenne that could be made that would alleviate some of the concerns that were noted and in order to make the intersection, uh, the proposed access point function a little better. However, um, staff would stress that that still does not, um, mean that the city would not be forced to come in and, and, um, make some additional modifications in the future if, if warranted. Um, so with that summary, I'd be happy to, to stand for any questions. We do have representation from the city engineering department as well, if there's any technical, um, questions that you all have as well. And, uh, with that summary, I'll, the recommendation, uh, for you all tonight is on the screen. Uh, this would be a recommendation to the city commission. The city commission will, would ultimately, uh, make the final determination.
Well, procedural question. Is this a public hearing right now?
This is not a public hearing.
Okay. So, can I maybe summarize in layman's terms to make sure I fully understood?
Yep.
The drawing that you just referenced with the markings that don't exist yet, that's how it's described here as one, as one of the, part of the recommendations? This is what would accomplish that?
So I'll try and answer part of that and I might ask for engineering staff to help me out if need be. What's included in the recommendation, and I'll just scroll up to that really, excuse me, really quickly, is, is, um, uh, condition number two here, where the, the access being contingent upon right-of-way modifications to 26th Avenue West that are necessary as determined by the city engineer to mitigate the concerns outlined in the staff report. What is shown in the, uh, site plan there, that is not something that the city put together. That's something that the applicant had put together based on a handful of different conversations, um, throughout a period of time that, that the applicant had with the city. Um, ultimately, the city would, um, would initiate a project, and this is where I'll defer to engineering on what that, how that process unfolds. But essentially, before any design is, is put forth, uh, the city would hire out a, contract out, out the design or the preliminary design of that, of that project. And so the details as far as which turning lanes may or may not be included in, in the project would be sorted out at a, at a future date and time. So the way this, the way that the recommendation is written is, um, to be determined by the city engineer.
But one point of clarity there, this graphic shows the right-in off of Cheyenne Street and staff is not in favor of that, no matter how-
Correct.
Right. So, so the, the 26th Avenue, that could be slightly different than what the picture shows. So that, in concept, could be approved, but the right-in off of Cheyenne Street is not, and the staff's not in support of it.
Correct.
And the new roadway shown is not something that would be owned by the city. It would be private drive.
Correct, yeah, that would be a private drive.
Do we know, this might be a question for engineering, but there is a proposed traffic light on Ninth and 32nd that impacts, I, I think, I live in this neighborhood, so I sit, I think it was very generous to say that traffic backs up to Fifth. I would say, more realistically, it backs up all the way to the roundabout, um, at busy times of the day, because I sit and go north. But is, can anybody touch on timing? Um, will that traffic light be in before this C-store goes up? Does anybody know?
Uh, we anticipate the traffic, uh, signal going in, uh, sometime this year.
Okay.
And, uh, it, since I'm up here, it'd probably also be worth noting that our, our design consultant, our transportation consultant, uh, does recommend that this access be a three-quarter access-
Okay.
At, at maximum.
Sure.
And he details in his letter that, you know, uh, instances of crashes and, and conflicts, you know, the levels that, that he would expect them to go up-
Yep.
For full access, so just, just something to note.
Sure, thank you.
And then as far as the, you know, C-store here, uh, this concept came about as a result of some conversations that the owner had, um, with, uh, PetroServe, they were looking at potentially, um, putting together a C-store at this location. Uh, those talks, I think, has, have since stalled, had, um, and so the timing is, there's no definitive timeline, I should say, for anything moving forward on this property.
Okay, I just, I feel like that Ninth and 32nd stoplight will help with some of the 26th Street traffic, um, or 26th Avenue traffic, excuse me. So that would maybe make it more realistic to add the new, um, entrance, if that makes sense.
So maybe a procedural question, Erin. What is the request of the, of us tonight? Do we need to decide on anything if there's not a actual development request? Or is this kind of something you'd like step, like the board to weigh in on?
That's a, that's a good question. Um, so the procedurally tonight, what is before you, we do have a live application from the property owner. They are making this request to the city. And so, uh, procedurally, the way that the ordinance is written is that it goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a recommendation before moving on to the city commission or an ultimate, uh, determination. The way that staff, um, kind of looked at this, um, in some of our earlier conversations, the, uh, request for the access location was, was kind of tied to the request for modifications to the, um, the right-of-way along 26th Avenue in order to accommodate, um, those, uh, the, the proposed access on the 26th Avenue. However, since the, um, kind of the development, uh, proposal has, has kind of stalled out a little bit and timing's uncertain, uh, we did have some conversations with the applicant about potentially just postponing this until, you know, development is imminent. Um, however, the applicant did choose to, um, to, to move forward with the request, um, in order to open up those access points with the conditions as outlined, so that if and when the applicant is ready to move forward in the near future, you know, that, they've already kind of gone through that hurdle and now it's just a matter of, um, either putting in the right-in, right-out with their site plan or petitioning the city to make those modifications to 26th Avenue. So those conditions would, would stay put, uh, if this was approved as, as currently written. And then if they wanted to mod, come back and modify those conditions, they could always make that request, um, in the future. So staff has, has no issue taking this forward, you know, with the conditions as outlined in order to kind of streamline the process in the future, if that makes sense.
Okay, well, I mean-
Just a couple of comments, excuse me. I guess I'm, I don't like the, uh, right turn in off Cheyenne Street. I think that's a rear-end accident waiting to happen. Uh, 24th Avenue would serve the same purpose for the people once they become familiar with the, whatever's developed there. On the other hand, I know, um, the city wants commercial development and anyone that owns a commercial operation wants easy access for their customers. So I think we have to try to works to some good solutions. I don't even know if this is a good solution as shown on 26th, but something along there, whether it's a three-quarter or turn or something like that with more access out the, on the Fifth Street, so they at least hit a regular inter, interchange there. But personally, I, I, I just can't see adding quick turns in, because someone's gonna slow down, think they're, think they're turning at 26th and I, I can see rear ends happening there. And there's gonna be someone trying to sneak out of there, you know it. It's gonna happen, no matter how well it's signed or, or directioned. The other thing is, we're talking to quick cons, and this is all conceptual, I understand that. If they're talking to a little strip mall there and they got land to the north, that's gonna be a lot of traffic in that one area, especially if they go with the C-store, which is, uh, generally speaking, C-stores are high, high volume in and out. So, um, I guess my personal opinion is no to anything on Cheyenne. Um, and as far as the street redevelopments, like, uh, was pointed out here, that 26th is bad now. So maybe if nothing happens here, the city has to look at improvements to that anyway, but that's another conversation. But I'm sure the people that own this, if, if these modifications come in, the neighbors will wonder who's paying for all the modifications to accommodate their commercial development. That's something perhaps the city commission has to work out too, but, um, those are my comments on it, I guess.
Good comments, I guess I would echo those as well. And I guess maybe just to, you know, to hit on the point about, you know, I think, uh, it's, it's fair to say the city has desired more commercial development and so we want to be cognizant of that. Access in and out of here is gonna be critical for no matter who it is. If it was a right-in, right-out on the south side of this parcel onto 26th, traffic then leaving this parcel would have to take a right and go west and then perhaps north on Fifth Street and then east on 24th to go back south. Is that kind of the expectation? Presumably, they would sort of loop around.
Or they could, or they could exit on the west side, onto Fifth Street and then go down to the corner there.
Sure.
Probably still be stacking there if they don't do anything with the roadway, but-
Right.
A little easier to get in it near the tail line and at the front of the line.
Right.
Fifth in the morning gets really backed up too, because when you drop kids off at the school, which is just north of here, you have to sit, they force you to go right out, so you have to come back around. So, yeah, that, that whole area is, is tough at specific times of day. But you could go right out, hit 24th, get back on Cheyenne and go south. I mean, that's what you would have to do during those times of day.
Yes. Point I'd perhaps like to make is, uh, to that is, we're talking about, uh, current conditions, uh, which are, exist as a result of the development or the reinland of, um, the housing there. We knew, I believe we knew, this is going to become a bottleneck, um, because there is only one or two ins and outs uh, for all the houses built all the way back to the diversion.
It seems to me that-
I think the, um, the-
I'm sorry.
Proposal that the staff has, the recommendations as you say, that staff has, uh, outlined, um, does actually find some balance to enable continued development. This is gonna be developed into something. And, uh, you know, while it's never gonna be ideal, sure, uh, it's, uh, you know, not going to, um, if it's commercial, the timing of the traffic, I think, will be a little bit, um, offset versus the extreme morning rush hour, afternoon rush hour, which is associated with the housing.
Well, I was just going to say that it seems, um, that the sentiment may be to not approve the exit off of Cheyenne, but I'm not sure, I'm ready to say that what's proposed here is going to address the issues, uh, that have come up and it's, I, I'm not ready to say go forward with those until there seems to be a need for more. Taking a look at this whole traffic issue-
Well, what's recommended here is that the city engineer come up with a plan. So we, if we would approve this, we would basically be putting it in the hands of the city engineer. We're not approving the specific concept that's-
Right, right, I get that. But is, is that instruction, maybe it's sufficient? Um, but the instruction to come up with the plan with those parameters, those parameters may be too confining at a point where we still maybe don't get, I, I don't have a sense of how bad the traffic is or could be. Uh, maybe everybody else does. I'm just not sure, I'm ready to say, yeah, go ahead with a, creating a plan.
Erin, does this come back to us at all? Or if we would approve the second part of this and defer it to the city engineer, do you guys just run with it? Or does it come back to here at some point?
It would not come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
The city-
However, the, there would be a lot more discussion that the city commission would have to have in relation to the public improvements.
Because the public improvements on 26th would be on, on our bill, or the city's bill?
Correct, it would be a city, city project. And so there would be a lot of steps involved in that, including design decisions and, and, um, funding decisions and, and things like that. If however, they were to choose kind of option one and they do a right-in, right-out driveway, that's something that could just be, uh, reviewed and approved at the, um, staff level, um, as part of their building permit application, for example. That would not require modifications to 26th Avenue.
I get, I guess that's my, uh, opinion is nothing on Cheyenne. Allow an access on 26th, but that has to be determined by the engineering department and staff and/or city commission. I don't think, as shown, that concept will work very well there either. That will be- That will be a real bottleneck with all those lanes.
Reminds me of the Costco situation.
Yeah, traffic coming in and out of there, that's that would be a real headache as
But it depends.
As shown.
It depends too what type of development. I mean, if it's not a gas station or C store, if it's something where there's less traffic.
Yeah, that'd make a difference.
Maybe that would be fine.
Yeah, office, a dentist's office or something.
So I don't know, I guess to me, as you've drafted the recommendation, I I think you've done a nice job of balancing all these perspectives. I think you're, I guess I'm in support of what Mike has talked about with restricting any access off of Cheyenne. There's already one on 24th and 26th. Limited restricted, limited access road there. So I guess with that being said, I would move the recommendation as noted in the staff report.
Okay, to make sure I understood it, you moved to approve with the recommendation of the access on 26th having either the two, one of the two conditions and deny the requested right in access off Cheyenne.
Correct.
That is the motion.
I'll second that with the hope that the changes improve the traffic flow overall. The resident of that.
Prior to vote, any other questions or discussion required? All those in favor of the approval with the recommendation of the 26th Avenue access with the two conditions and the denial of the Cheyenne access, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Item number five. Public hearing, A 23-1 North Pond at the Preserve 16th Edition, a replot and rezoning from C Commercial Office Park to R3 Multiple Dwellings of Lot 2, Block 1 of North Pond at the Preserve 6th Edition, 2506 Street East, City, West Fargo, North Dakota, Beyond Shelter.
Thank you. This application was received in order to accommodate plating and zoning of property to allow for a senior affordable housing project. The applicant has submitted an application for replat and rezoning to R3 Multiple Dwellings. The preliminary site plan shows a 71 unit senior housing project with underground parking on a on proposed Lot 2, Block 1. Lot 1 to the north will remain Commercial Office Park. Additionally, the applicant is petitioning for reduced off-street parking requirement from 142 parking spots to 106. Under Section 4-451 of the Off-Street Parking and Loading Regulations, if it can be demonstrated by the property owner through market studies or other means that the required off-street parking is excessive and or lower parking demand is supported by the Institute of Traffic Engineers Parking Generation Manual and a lesser requirement justifiable, the City Commission may reduce the number of required parking spots by passage of a resolution approved by a majority of the members of the City Commission. The applicant has submitted a letter in support of the requested parking reduction, which describes the parking utilization at two similar senior housing project locations that they manage. Notices to property owners within 150 feet and departments and applicable agencies were notified. One area property owner asked if they would be special assessed for any improvements for this project, and they were opposed to it. If that were the case, it will not be. Engineering reviewed the proposed site plan and indicated concern with the trash enclosure slash access on to Sixth Street East, concerns with the sanitation trucks backing onto the road, as well as the access interfering with the functional area of the intersection to the south. And the Park District indicated they do not intend to maintain the bike path, which is not on property that they own. The easement was dedicated to the public. The proposed application is consistent with city plans and ordinances. It is recommended that the city approve the proposed application on the basis that is consistent with city plans and ordinances. This is a public hearing. I'm available to answer any questions, as is the applicant and applicant representative.
Thank you. Question, you said something which I didn't catch when I first read through this. The park's not going to maintain that path?
So this property is there's an access easement or bikeway easement on the plat.
It's the path that goes along the pond we're talking about?
Right, so this property is is owned by a property, separate property owner. This property here is also owned by the applicant's or the person who's selling the property. When there's a bikeway easement along a pond, public works sometimes maintains the bike path. Sometimes the Park District maintains that they just sort of have an arrangement, whether they maintain it or not. This little section right here, this 10-foot section, the Park District indicated they don't have the staff to maintain it. So it remains to be seen whether, you know, the bike path will be maintained or, you know, by public works.
So this easement was given to the Park Districts as part of the land?
It's not, it's just dedicated to the public. It's right, it was indicated on the plat years ago. Now, whether the assumption was being that this was supposed to be Commercial Office Park, you know, possibly owned by Wex, who also owns property in the area, that it would be a meandering bike path trail for the the office use. You know, we kind of did some research and we weren't able to figure that out. But on the plat and on the title opinion, it's just dedicated to the public. So as far as maintenance, you know, it just, it's one of those those items when there is a bike path, whether the city will maintain it, whether the property owner will maintain it. But the park indicated that in this instance.
So it falls into disrepair, nobody knows who has to or should.
I can I can respond, so.
Sorry if I'm segueing there a little bit, but it
So the, it's my understanding, the Park District, as the property is vacant, the prop the Park District has been maintaining it in past years. But now that the property is developing, the Park District has indicated that they no longer would like to maintain that path. And so that's something that we'll have to sort out internally, kind of at the staff level on whether the property owner will will take over maintenance of that that trail or if that's something that the city Public Works Department will be maintaining going forward. But some somebody will be maintaining it in into the future. It's just sorting out who that is now that the Park District has indicated that they no longer intend to maintain it.
So it's either city, park, or landowner?
Correct, yep.
Okay, so I'm done with my segue. This is a public hearing. So with that, I will open it for comments from the public. Is there anybody who wishes to speak? Please come up, say who you are.
Hi, I'm Christopher Miller with Beyond Shelter Developer, working with the Housing Authority of Cass County on this project. And we are here to answer any questions that commissioners or the public have for this project.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that has questions, comments, wishes to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public comment. Commissioners?
I do have a question for, is it Chris? It's this, this is subsidized senior housing?
It's affordable housing, so it's not subsidized affordable housing. What we utilize, like we did with Monterey and Brighton and some of our other projects in the Fargo, West Fargo areas, low-income housing tax credits from North Dakota Housing Finance Agency and then some other sources of funding. So it's reduced rents for seniors.
So my question is about the residents here, you're making the case that they wouldn't have as many cars and as much need for the parking. That suggests they might need more services. And I'm wondering if there are services in this area for the residents that you're envisioning? If this is a bus route, that residents would be able to take places that they need to go, et cetera? Can you talk about the advisability of this particular location for these residents? And whether they have services and whether there's amenities for them? Rust Ed is is closed, that's a lovely amenity, but what else is there going to be?
One of the things that really attracted us about this site is the proximity to a lot of the amenities that we like seniors to have. Sanford Health, there are the hospitals right there, Rust Ed's right there, there's banking, there's retail. The bus runs right down Sixth Street there. And we also, when we do our projects, we do work with other agencies to provide services for the seniors. And they have that opportunity to utilize those at no cost to them.
So the bus does go down Sixth?
Yes.
It does sound like some of those amenities would require cars? And you know, looking at really how much is there reduced need for the parking? Is there going to be any shuttle service or something to take people, so again, they don't need as many cars?
Well, what we've discovered with our other properties, there's the underground parking, there'll be one spot for every unit. It's the extra parking outside of that. Typically, we don't see seniors in our projects, our other apartment buildings have more than two vehicles or more than one vehicle. And some seniors utilize ride share and and things like that to go to their appointments and whatnot.
Transportation to services for seniors is already in the community. I'm glad that you're thinking about it. I'm glad there's a bus route here. It doesn't necessarily completely mitigate it, but you should pay attention to it.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
No questions for me.
Any other questions? Accept the motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed application. Do we need to add a condition that they figure out who is going to maintain that bike path?
Since it's not in the scope of this, I would say no.
No, okay.
Erin has assured us that that answer will be on.
All right, Erin, it's on you if that bike path gets dirty.
I'll second it.
Were there any condi-
No, no conditions.
No conditions, okay. Any other questions or discussion prior to vote? It has been moved and seconded to approve the application as submitted. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Thank you. Item six, the public hearing, A 23-2, conditional use permit for temporary concrete crushing facility and stockpiling of concrete and asphalt located 2351 Eighth Street Northwest, Lot 2, Block 1, West Fargo, 12th Edition, City, West Fargo, North Dakota, Dakota Fence, Gowin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So FSHQ currently owns the property and they would like to allow Gowin Construction to crush the concrete and asphalt that will be removed from a road, North Dakota Department of Transportation Road Project that's taking place later this summer on Main Avenue and the I-94 interchange. The applicant is applying for the CUP to lease out the property to the contractor to do the crushing operations and stockpiling of aggregate materials. The operation would be temporary. The crushing plant will be on site for about three weeks in May and three weeks in August. Once the contractor is done crushing for the three weeks in May, the equipment, which is apparently fairly large, can be picked up and moved to the next job or spot. And then they would be bringing back the equipment back at the start of August for three more weeks. If it doesn't get moved for another job, it would just stay idle for the months of June and July until the job would pick back up in August. Concrete crushing equipment would be located more than 100 feet away from existing property lines in setbacks. Applicable agencies and departments, as well as property owners in the surrounding area, were notified. The only comments the city received were comments from the City of West Fargo Engineering Department. The Engineering Department would like the applicant's contractor to obtain a construction stormwater permit prior to commencing operations. As part of the permit, the contractor would need to submit stormwater pollution, a stormwater pollution prevention plan and erosion control plan to show how sediment debris is created by the concrete crushing would be controlled. Staff didn't find this application to be inconsistent with city plans and ordinances. So therefore, we found it to be consistent with our current ordinances. It is recommended that the city approve the proposed application on the basis that it is consistent with city plans and ordinances with recommended conditions of approval as follows. One, that the applicant's contractor obtain a construction stormwater permit from the City Engineering Department prior to commencing operations. Two, that the applicant complies with all state and local regulations for concrete crushing operations. Three, that the hours of operation for concrete crushing are limited to 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And then four, that all concrete crushing operations cease by August 31st of 2023, which would be written into the conditional use permit and signed by both the applicant as well as the city and then recorded. This is a public hearing. I'm available if you have any questions, as well as the applicants. And then we also have someone from the City Engineering Department here as well, in case you have any questions for them.
Thank you, Malika. This is a public hearing. With that, I'll open it up for public comment. Anybody wish to speak on this topic? Seeing none, close that section. Commissioners?
I have two questions. The hours of operation limited to 7 to 11, is that a common timeframe that's in city ordinances or is that specific?
Yes, that was taken, that was taken actually directly from some previous conditional use permits that we've done in the past for concrete crushing. You know, perhaps the applicant might be able to speak about what common timeframes are usually done for crushing.
And then second question, the seizing of operation by August 31st, I I think that was a date that I saw in their letter as well, if I recall right, or maybe in the application. Just curious how much, we all know construction, everybody wants to get done on time and hopes the weather is perfect and all that. But if we get a bad spring or the project gets delayed and this date is not, I guess what's driving that date? Is there something happening on September 1st that we need to be out of the way for? Or was this arbitrary? And what happens if there's unforeseen conditions that require concrete crushing to extend beyond that?
Now, I do like a date because this is temporary, so something.
Understood.
Perhaps that's
But I just, the construction season around here typically extends.
No room for error.
Yeah, October, so I just
Yeah, so I can kind of speak a little bit to that. So just based off of, I would say, previous concrete crushing operations which have taken place in West Fargo, which have, you know, caused some concerns among staff and commission members and code enforcement. Staff felt that it would be prudent to put a sunset date within the conditional use permit. August 31st was simply chosen just because that was the date indicated by the applicant that the last three weeks of August. You know, I'm sure that that date could potentially be moved if we needed to get it moved by. I can let the applicant speak a little bit more about, you know, if they have any sort of backup plans on if construction would be moved.
The applicant is here? The question is to Commissioner Dodds, is that date an issue?
My name is Kurt Horner and I'm with Gowin Construction. The project does have an October 14th completion date. And right now, that's what the schedule is, what we're redoing the westbound from kind of by all finish out to the Raymond Interchange. And that's like phase one. And it's going to take us maybe two weeks to get the old pavement off. The crushing subcontractor is in text. They're going to, they do about 6,000 ton a day. There's roughly about 60,000 ton coming off that day. So it's it's about a two-week duration that they're going to need to process that first material for phase one. And then they're going to leave and we bring that product back out on the road. Our local contractor should be doing the paving. And there's other things that go with it as far as some of the signing, striping. And and then once we get that complete, we're going to switch traffic onto the newly constructed westbound lane and close the eastbound lane. And then we'll do everything all over again. And that's scheduled to begin kind of in late July, August for the second phase. It'd be, it's actually the third phase. There's a little one in between where we have to switch the temporary ramp connections at the interchanges. And so it it may run a couple of weeks, but I don't anticipate it going into September. So that's why we kind of chose the August 31st. And as far as your hours of service, 12, 13-hour days is all we run. I don't, I don't see anyone working past 8 o'clock at 11:00 and it gets to be kind of late and so. Okay. Okay, thank you.
A question, sir, while you're here. Will you be the only ones utilizing that site? You're a construction company. This will not be open house for others? Cause we've had problems in the past where permits been granted-
That is correct.
And other companies started dropping their concrete there as well.
That is correct. Uh, it's kind of a project-specific site that we're using. And the intentions are, there's like a hundred and thirty thousand ton of product coming off that we're going to process. There's a hundred thousand going back on the road. So the surplus we are going to use to develop, uh, the owner's land for, uh, future businesses. Yep.
Okay, so that was my second question. At the end of August, you're not going to have a pile sitting there anymore. You'll have it, whatever you you have left on the site, you'll have spread out so we don't have a pile sitting there for-
Yep, it by, I would say, um, probably by October it'll be spread out because we are going to develop the land in the area. Yep.
Okay, good. Thanks.
You're welcome.
I have a question from Malachi. The staff recommendation about complying with all state and local regulations for concrete crushing. I'm assuming that those, um, address any potential air quality, water quality issues so that we're not um, having an environmental impact, an undesirable environmental impact.
Correct. And I can let maybe Jerry speak a little bit to it, um, but from my very limited understanding of, uh, environmental controls in the state of North Dakota, um, that there's some various permits, uh, that have to be filled out prior to them being able to commence, including, um, this sort of stormwater pollution mitigation, uh, strategy or plan, um, to kind of show how they'll control the air quality or sediment from falling into our storm water retention ponds that are displacing any sort of soils or anything like that.
And particles in the air that float away, that's, uh, handled by these permits and?
We're going to be using water to control the dust that's in the air. They actually spray the product on the crushing, uh, and then it actually gets sprayed on the conveyor going up into the stockpile. So that's how we control the dust in the air.
So it's handling of the water that is the prime thing.
They have tanks or that would supply that they have, um, sprayers on, multiple sprayers during the crushing process. Yep.
Thank you.
So this would be, I'm sorry, uh, this would be similar to the operation down in the Brookings area?
Did you repeat that question?
This would be similar to that operations down off of I twenty-nine, uh, down in the Brookings area?
The Brookings, um, we've done them up by north of town by Grandin. Um, we did, uh, two non-northbound stretch of twenty-nine and southbound. Yep. In the, in those rural areas, sometimes they don't use as much water, but we've crushed in, in the, or there's businesses or, um, residents and that's where we use a lot of water to, uh, control the dust.
Commissioners, if, if I might real quick, uh, just if, if the, uh, the commission does approve the permit, uh, you know, essentially staff will continue to work with the applicants on making sure they're complying with all the requirements. We don't really anticipate air quality issues. The big one is usually the stormwater requirements, but, uh, staff will work with the applicants on that stuff. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll move to approve with the four conditions noted in the recommendation section.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the application with the four conditions noted by staff. Any further questions or discussion prior to vote? All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Item number seven, this is a public hearing, A twenty-three dash three. I don't know how to pronounce that word.
Socky.
Socky.
Socky. I don't want to say that wrong either. Subdivision, a replot of lots ten to fifteen, Block One, Palm subdivision, and all of the vacated Short Street, Cass County, North Dakota, and conditionally used permit for a private, non-commercial recreational building on proposed Lot Two, Block One, Socky subdivision, Cass County, North Dakota, Socky. Okay.
Thank you. This application is received in order to replat previously subdivided lots into two and vacate right-of-way for development in a rural estate zoning district in our city's extraterritorial area. The applicant owns four lots on the south side of Nineteenth Avenue Northwest, west of Cass County Highway seventeen north, and proposes subdividing their property along with two lots to the west, which are owned by Cass County, into two lots for development of proposed Lot Two. Proposed Lot One is a Cass County flood property and is undevelopable. The applicant has also submitted an application for a conditional use permit for the purpose of building a four thousand square foot building for private, non-commercial recreational use. A private, non-commercial recreational use or cultural facility is defined, defined as being a facility catering exclusively to members and their guests or premises and buildings for recreational or athletic purposes, which are not conducted primarily for gain. The applicant has submitted a narrative describing the proposed use, indicating he has four young children and would like to utilize the site for youth activities, leisure hobbies, and storage of personal items for recreational purposes. He also has indicated that he leases several Cass County flood properties and maintains the site and has a right to post the properties. The applicant has indicated the proposed structure will be comparable in terms of building materials to other buildings in the area and has submitted photos of similar elevations in the area with his application and has indicated the exterior finish would be similar. A conditional use permit agreement is required to be signed prior to issuance of the building permit and may include conditions deemed appropriate by the commission. With reference to the criteria for granting a conditional use permit access is proposed via Nineteenth Avenue Northwest and has been reviewed initially by Reed Township, who referred the applicant to their township engineer for analysis of culvert size as well as an engineering study be submitted as part of the plans for an access permit. General compatibility with adjacent uses and, um, other properties within the district. He intends to use it primarily as a residential use, which may follow under the rural estate district regulations. Property owners within three hundred and fifty feet were notified, as well as applicable agencies and departments, including Reed Township officials, Cass County Planning, and the Cass County Sanitarium. An area property owner called asking for more information regarding the proposed use. An email was received and provided to you from a property owner to the north with concerns of development so close to the Cass County flood buyout parcels and concerns that this would cause issues with flooding. The property owner was also concerned with the use of the flood buyout properties. An email was received this week from a property owner to the north asking about the proposed use. The app, in terms of consistency though with the comprehensive plan, the application is providing a comparable use similar to the residential uses in the area and therefore the appli- application may be considered consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends, it is recommended that the city approve the proposed application for the replat and conditional use permit on the basis it is consistent with city plans and ordinances with the recommended conditions of approval as follows. The building is constructed of the same material and colors as similar structures in the area. Assigned conditional use permit agreement is received and recorded against the property. The applicant is to meet all federal, state, and local requirements for improvements to the site and structures. And any concerns from Fargo-Cass Public Health in regards to on-site septic systems on the newly proposed lot is addressed and are reviewed by the applicant prior to consideration of the final plat. This is a public hearing. Um, the applicant is present to answer any questions. And I believe there's some property owners who may have questions and comments. I'm also available to answer any.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. With that, I will open it up for comments from the public. Anybody wish to speak or have questions, comments regarding this topic? Since this is the last one and I still see somebody sitting there. Please, uh, identify who you are.
I'm Mark McAllister and I'm Chair of Reed Township. So the board members had had a discussion with him about the engineering and stuff off of Nineteenth Avenue. With the current zoning changes that we've done and because Nineteenth Avenue is an artillery road, then we're supposed to be limiting accesses. Uh, because it's close to County Seventeen, because there's other driveways and accesses, we would probably require him to have to reinstall Hyde Street in order to go south. Because it won't meet our zoning ordinances at this point for putting in the road access off of Nineteenth.
All right, now-
Next, the other comment I would make is buildings that are similar, there is-
Mark, hold on a second. You said you would have to have him reinstall Hyde Street?
Hyde Street is gone. So when, when the-
Where is Hyde Street?
That's this one on the east.
Yep. It's when the, when the county-
Oh, that's the street?
There you go, right?
There?
So the county, when they did the flood buyouts, basically that, that road, there was almost no gravel or anything left on it anyway. So everything was plowed under, leveled, and sodded or seeded for grass. So the original access to all the houses that were in that flood buyout was by that north-south road. There was an interchange for that road up on Nineteenth Avenue. And then with agreement between the township and the county, we removed the access to Nineteenth Avenue, again trying to keep the busy road without having as many accesses as possible. The, the future plan from West Fargo, or the, the future plans that we've seen or seen discussed makes that eventually it's a mile line road will end up being a four-lane road or something larger at some point. So again, that was our discussion.
You're speaking of Nineteenth then?
Yeah, was to, is basically at this point with our new zoning ordinances that were done, the, the idea is to limit growth on any of the mile line roads in terms of accesses.
And so you're saying you, you would want Hyde Street reinstalled so that whoever owns Lot Five, a budding County Seventeen, would have access from Hyde Street on the west-
You'd have to almost do Hyde Street back to the south. And Hyde Street was a private road. It was deeded to the public on the plats from West Fargo, but the township never took the road or accepted the road. So it's not actually a township road. It's, it's deeded to the public, but it's not a township road, just like Short Street, deeded to the public, not a township road.
This, Mark, this determination from the Reed Township, is that something that, Aaron, are you guys aware of this? Or is this kind of new information?
Uh, this is new information as far as the planning department is concerned. I don't know if you had conversations with our engineering department or anybody else with the city?
No, I don't think, and Al saw that it was on your agenda. And I know at our last meeting, we had discussed, um, some of the stuff in terms of the access, but the zoning was changed like four and five months ago, finally voted in.
Okay. And so just maybe some points of clarification. Uh, this is within West Fargo's extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. So the city does have exclusive zoning jurisdiction for this area. The access was discussed, um, from staff's perspective, understanding that the township needs to, um, ultimately approve any access points undue township road. Um, the city's comments were that the access should be, you know, located as far west as possible in order to, uh, provide some spacing from the intersection of County Road Seventeen and Nineteenth Avenue. And so i- i- in any case, we do need to allow some type of access for this property. Uh, it is plotted today. It is zoned today for development. Um, and so it's just a matter of, I guess, finding out where the best point of access is, I think, between the township and the city is, is kind of-
All right, I'm a little confused. Staff recommendation was as far west as possible on this, uh, for access to this location if he's going to build something. The county is saying-
Township.
Township, excuse me, is saying, no, you're going to have to go in and reestablish Hyde Street, which is on the east edge of this property.
Yes.
So it's, that would be this applicant's access to that property, to that building he's requesting of.
Correct. And ultimately, the township has the right on the road for who has access.
Okay, so, um, and as far as putting that road back in, building it up, the gravel, whatever required to undo what was leveled.
So we would consider that again as a private drive. So that it would be on the property owner.
Why does the township want the access closer to County Road Seventeen? That seems counter to everything we're hearing from access control.
I want to actually put the access closer. He would have to actually come all the way down to Fifteenth in order to get out because the access has been removed off of Nineteenth Avenue. So he would have to leave that property and head south a eighth of a mile.
Okay, so you're saying no access to Nineteenth?
Correct.
He would have to put in a driveway where Hyde Street used to be located all the way down to Fifteenth.
Close to Fifteenth.
Is that like a mile away?
No, it's like eighth.
Eighth of a mile away. And that person would be required to establish the road and maintain it.
Correct. It'd be like a driveway.
Is this news to the applicant?
I'll let the applicant respond to that.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's news to me.
All right, so-
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Ben Socky. I'm the applicant of the, uh, the project over there. So it's been kind of a little bit of a long drawn-out process, being that it's, uh, in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. So we've had the county involved, we've had the township involved, and then ultimately the city involved here because they have the hammer on something like that. So we went, uh, talked back and forth regarding the exact access points up there. Uh, conversation with Cass County Engineering, uh, on part of the thought process to remove that approach there off of Nineteenth was the fact that people were getting down in there, turning donuts, monkeying around, it kind of caused a mischief. So they, they pulled that out. Um, so then looking at that, you know, then that kind of landlacks the property. So I, I, Mr. Leonard, I think, is the, the road super for, for the township. And it was his recommendation, I think I, I put a copy of that in the, uh, um, material there to, to have that road access uh, where it was designed, where I had the building laid out and everything on the, as far west from County Seventeen as we could get for precisely those reasons. Um, if, if the, I guess I would have to, to look at that to see what exactly that would entail. Um, you know, I designed the building around access off of Nineteenth. Uh, I'm not saying we couldn't work around that, but obviously establishing a road for an eighth of a mile, uh, et cetera is, is cost prohibitive. So I guess with, with that, I'll, I'll let Mr. McAllister finish and I'll address any comments as they arise unless there's any immediate questions here for me.
No?
Can, uh, can staff put up this, this page? I think maybe helps in the clarity of what we're talking about right now. It's the page that shows his garage location or shed, or whatever we want to call it. Okay, and from what I see on here, are you contemplating merging those four lots? It looks like you own the two to the east next to that old road there and then the next two. You can make that into one lot.
One lot, yep.
So that access would, would not be an issue any longer as far as from Hyde Street because you can't leave single lots without access, correct? As long as you could get an access off Nineteenth somewhere, if it's within the township rules and everything else, then that whole plot would have access. Would that be correct? And then the Hyde situation, the old Hyde Road or whatever it was, would be a non-factor because we don't have any islands out there. I guess you want to say of developed lots.
But I think the county is saying that they're not going to allow Hyde Street to be reconnected.
Yeah, I guess the question is maybe the township is here is, where his proposed driveway is, is that too close to County Road Seventeen as presented?
The rules of the zoning ordinance that we followed, that are what the county had recommended to us is all entrances on an artillery road have to be, was it a thousand feet apart? So if putting a new driveway in conflicts with the old Quam property, County Seventeen, Crafts driveway, and the M Street. So we already have four accesses that are within. And in fact, for the thousand feet, you go all the way back to the bridge.
And in fact, for the thousand feet, you go all the way back to the bridge. So there's already six accesses in an area where there's supposed to be one. But when you have the houses that have been there forever, when you do. But Hyde Street was the access. So the, the, the one, the Lot Fifteen, did have an access onto Nineteenth Avenue before the flood buyouts. But all of the properties south of his lots, all accessed from Hyde Street. And that's why Short Street ran into Hyde Street.
Okay, so the bottom line in this plan is, he can't have any kind of access on Nineteenth from the property he owns.
That's.
Whether he merges them or not.
When, when Al called me who does zoning, he basically said it won't meet the zoning.
Okay, so his only access will be then by the, the old vacated Hyde, which is still a public, right away, right now, or whatever?
Because we are required to give access.
Right, yeah, and that's, that's why I, I thought you were talking about these island, no, we can't.
Oh, there's already.
Yeah, we can't create, create lots that don't have access. And I thought he was solving that problem by merging them. But if the, the question is, he can't be that close or put any kind of access just because of the number of access points you already have existing.
Right.
Then that, that's a moot point. He can't, he can't develop it as he, he's believed he's gonna develop it. The only way he's gonna be able to do it is by creating an access road.
Thank you, Aaron has some comments he wants to share here with us.
Yeah, just, uh, just to point out one thing. So, I mean Hyde Street has a, so let me take a quick step back. We are essentially dealing with, um, some, you know, existing conditions as they, as they were platted, you know, way back when. And, um, the applicant is essentially, you know, consolidating for lots that are existing today into one single lot, uh, for, for development. The Hyde Street, as it's kind of shown there, you can't really see it to the south, but Hyde Street has been vacated to the south, and so it does not actually connect to Seven, County Road Seventeen anywhere. And so the, there is really no option to go south on any sort of public, um.
Hyde, Hyde Street never connected to Seventeen and always went down to Fifteenth.
It's, it's been vacated between Nineteenth and, is it Fifteenth?
Fifteenth.
And Sixteenth.
And Sixteenth. So it's, it's three blocks.
Yeah, I can bring up a graphic.
Yeah.
So, well, let's finish this, but I think we're maybe getting off track of what's in front of us tonight.
Right, but as he's, he's kind of proposing to have access on, I guess that's why I'm trying to clarify.
Understood.
Is where his access is and how that obviously would affect what decision we make.
Can I make one comment here? I, I completely understand the, the number of access points up there, and I can understand the concern. Um, I guess my point on something like this is it's not gonna be a high-traffic venue. It's gonna be a complete recreational deal. There's gonna be a very limited number of incest, egress, ingress and egress on something like that. I guess that, that, that's my point. Um, at, at one point in time, obviously Hyde Street was out to Nineteenth. It wasn't an issue then. I don't know why it became an issue now, so.
Uh, so just the, uh, graphic I pulled up here is just our, our zoning map in the packet. Um, but it's my understanding anyway, Hyde Street, you know, once did continue to the south, but it has been vacated over the years. And so it essentially dead-ends, you know, where my cursor is right here. And so it, it does not provide, you know, access to any, any public street to the south.
But that right-of-way continues south to Sixteenth Street?
No, he's saying it's been vacated.
No, it does continue south.
So.
Okay, we've got a disagreement here. Aaron's saying it's vacated, you're saying it exists. I don't know that either one is in front of us tonight. I think we need to go back to what's in front of us. The applicant has asked for a, a, a conditional use permit for a larger building than what the code traditionally allows. And there's a lot of case history allowing those larger buildings. And he's asking to replat four lots into one. Access is important for the applicant, but I'm not sure that's our problem.
Correct.
That's the applicant's problem.
Yep.
Now, I, if you're the applicant, it's good that you know these things, because you don't want to build your building without getting access to it. But in front of us tonight, I don't know that that's germane to our discussion.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, when I was trying to get a little clarity here, is that, did they go hand in hand? If you build a building, but you can't get to it, I, I don't even know if you could get permitted if you don't have access to it, but.
It, and it sounds like the access issue is new, and Mark, thanks for coming tonight. Um, and so I, I guess I'm kind of wondering if this is something we need to table until that gets ironed out, or I'm not sure that, uh, there's any value of us approving the replat, unless that's something you still want us to consider.
So I'll just, uh, jump in really quick. So that's a, an excellent point, and thank you for kind of bringing us back to attention. Um, the applications before you tonight are for the conditional use permit for the, the proposed use, as well as the subdivision to vacate, um, Short Street and consolidate the lots as shown on the, the, uh, application. Um, ultimately, the access point where it is, whether it's to the north or to the, you know, east and south, that is something that we can, you know, continue to work through between the city, the township and the county. Um, ultimately, you know, that is somewhat independent from, um, what is, um, before you tonight. And so I would maybe defer to the applicant if, if he chooses, if he'd like to continue the conversation. Um, otherwise, if he'd like to, uh, to have you all, um, continue your, your, uh, conversation here tonight and, and take action.
One last question, just because I'm trying to learn things as I go along here. Short Street, you got a, a public right-of-way, I would assume, a right of some sort, it's in the public domain. How does that revert back to the, the adjacent property owner? Is that, how, how does that work? All of a sudden, that, on his proposal, he now owns that, that former right-of-way?
Yep. So the, uh, there's kind of two ways that, that the public, the vacation to public right-of-way can take place. One is through a vacation plat, and two is through a replat with, uh, essentially a vacation of the previous plat. Um, and so this is essentially the latter, where this plat will, will basically vacate the previous plat. The right-of-way, uh, reverts back to the, um, the owner or the chain entitled, uh, the owner in chain of title. And so in this case, um, Mr. Saki, the applicant, owns the north side of the, um, right-of-way, as well as the south side of the right-of-way. And so he would, uh, take ownership of the, the right-of-way once it's vacated. The, uh, lot to the west, uh, it's kind of hard to see in some of the line work here, but this rectangle on the west here, that's, um, something that the county owns. The county, uh, joined in to the application essentially, um, in order to vacate the, the western portion of Short Street, so that we didn't have a remnant, um, piece of right-of-way. Um, since the county is abutting the north and the south sides of that area, that would revert to the county. So it just reverts back.
I was wondering how that worked, how, you know, how it goes to his ownership, you know? Okay, now we know.
Learning all kinds of stuff. Um, yes, the motion, the, the application before us has to do with the replot and the, um, is it a conditional use?
Yeah.
Conditional use permit for the construction of a four thousand square foot building. Um, how you get on and off that replotted chunk of land is interesting. Um, but.
Point of order, are we still in the public hearing? And, and are there others who are going to speak?
I have not closed the public.
Okay, good, thank you.
Portion. Or, did I?
I thought you did.
I did not.
I live just to the north. Yeah, I'm kind of curious about what.
I'm sorry, sir, your, your name again?
Uh, my name is Steve Craft. I live to the property just to the north, right across Nineteenth Avenue. So, uh, I'm kind of curious what I'm gonna look at every morning. You say, you know, he's proposing a light building in the area. Well, there's, there's, uh, chicken barns that have been there for, for ages. There's other steel buildings that are dull and gray, and I'm, you know, this is right up my front door. This property right now is pretty pristine. It's, it's pretty to look at right now, if you want to drive out there and take a look. I want to know what, 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 what I'm gonna be looking at. I also want to know what kind of noise, what kind of, you know, what kind of recreational vehicles that he's talking about. Because, uh, I mean, this used to be the area where I could walk my dogs and, and, you know, take my grandkids over. Now, now I've got no access to it at all, because it's been posted. So I'm, I'm curious, you know, as a landowner, I want to know how this is gonna affect my property values. Am I gonna look at a big steel, you know, shiny building over there, or what am I, what am I dealing with? Thank you.
Yeah, I just, uh, just handed him an exhibit. I printed off, I don't know.
Yeah, sure.
In, in some way, shape or form, that's what the building's gonna look like. Um, I have no interest, no intent to, to put up an eyesore. That's not my, that's not my style. That's not my cup of tea. Um, my objective for this project is exactly as Mr. King described, to get out there and get my kids active and running around and doing stuff. Um, it's not my intent to, to restrict access on that property. I was advised by my legal counsel that I post that, because when I lease the property from the county, I'm responsible for it. I have to carry liability insurance on it. So that, that's the reason why I did that. It's not because I'm some sort of a greedy landowner or wannabe maven or anything like that. It's just a simple risk management practice. Um, then as far as the recreational uses on something like that, um, this property's always been utilized by, I don't, I don't know if it's the neighborhood or the neighbors, but when I've been up there mowing and maintaining here this past summer, there's been numerous dirt bikes, four-wheelers, snowmobiles, um, out there. And it was, you know, kind of surprising to me how many were on Nineteenth Avenue actually, and none of these were mine. Uh, I don't even have any. My kids want some, and I say, well, we don't have a place to ride, so it's a discussion. I'm, I'm not saying that's what we're gonna do, but this is primarily gonna be used for, I want to put in a batting cage for my boys. I want to put in a golf simulator. I want to do different things. Maybe, uh, maybe put together a kit car. It's not gonna be a chop shop. There's gonna be no outside storage. Um, and I guess as the exhibits that I provided and the locations, it'll be, uh, much nicer than anything that's, that's up there right now, so.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public?
I, I guess my only other question, and, and I live, I'm sorry, I, I live close to there too, is rather than saying that the building has to, will match existing buildings in the area, shouldn't it have to match what West Fargo's code is? Because there is code for steel buildings when you put up a new one now. Because we have to have, because even, even like in mine, you have to have facade, we have to have this, we have to have that, in order to meet West Fargo's code at this point. So it would make sense to me that, that he still has to follow West Fargo's rules, not Melissa's.
Assuming that's part of number three. That's gotta be part of number three.
Is that part of number three in the recommendation?
I can respond to that quick. Uh, this, he would need to, um, meet all applicable building codes. Anyway, so the, the steel building requirements that you mentioned, those would all be applicable as well.
So recommendation number three addresses that point, I think.
It's, it's a requirement for everybody, so it's.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Harriet Smith Hammer, I live, well, I'm the only house left on Hyde Street. I'm way down at the south end. All the others were bought and out, including that one you were talking about on the west side of Short Street up there. But anyway, I guess my question is, so will there be sewer and water? It, will this be living quarters? Will this be indoor recreation or outdoor recreation?
Yeah, um, my intent is to keep everything, all structures and vehicles, whatever, inside. Not gonna say that the kids aren't gonna be outside throwing a baseball around or shooting each other with a paintball gun or something like that.
What about recreational vehicles, you know, four-wheelers?
Uh, I have none at this point. I have no intention of, of causing any more disruption out there than is, is right now.
Um, will there be sewer and water in here then?
Uh, the, uh, Casperal Water is out there, and it would be onsite septic. To which I have a, a letter from the county sanitarian saying that he would approve that, so.
Okay. Okay, I guess that's.
Are there any other comments, questions from the public?
Hi. Good evening. Uh, Matt Hines, and I'm a resident to the north of the proposed development here. And I think the question was answered, but I just want to clarify. Uh, my concern is, as a resident of that area, kids use that area. They love to go down there, walk. Uh, as he said, their snowmobiles that go through there, uh, neighbors walk their dogs through there. It is a nice, beautiful area. Would have liked to see it being more of a park area than being developed, to be honest, but is what it is. But, uh, to clarify what you had stated, Mr. Saki, was the intent is not to impose on the right-of-way of people being able to use the, what is now Cass County public property to the south, or whether.
With, within reason.
Yep.
Within reason. Um, and it might be something as far as an attract your own risk or a waiver or what have you. But yeah, I mean, it's not my intent of, I'm assuming, the risk and liability of something like that. I don't want your kid jumping under the tree and.
And same thing, as seeing families down there, my own family's taking pictures in that area, family pictures in that area. It's, it's one of those areas, like I said, it's, it's a nice area. I'd like to continue to be able to have access to what is considered pu- uh, Cass County public property. Also appreciate that he does lease it from the, the county as well, so he does have.
Well, that, is this, I, do you lease this portion too?
Um, which area?
Along the river?
Yes, so basically, basically I lease the, I, I, I believe, um, I'm sorry, I'm gonna name him, sorry.
Smith Hammer.
Smith Hammer. I, I believe she leases one of the county properties north of her. And then I lease everything else that goes up along the river that adjoins County Seventeen to the river, then wraps up around to those two county lots there on the, uh, far western edge. There is an additional property owner that owns the long lineal piece, uh, with Seventeenth Avenue furniture in between there and Hyde Street. Yeah, outside of, outside of those three people, I guess we control that whole quadrant, I guess.
So, nothing we are deciding here influences that?
No, I'm clarifying his statements that he made earlier, that there would not be loss of access necessarily, those may.
Ben, a question for you. Is that lease annual, or is that a multi-year lease? Just curious.
It's, it's an annual lease, which just renewed from, from year to year. And I don't want to make any, any promises here too. There was some, some misunderstandings of what my intentions are on this property. And that, that's just not the case. I'm a commercial real estate broker by trade. I'm not gonna lease the property. I want to use the property, so.
This property is zoned as such, it's a commercial operation, couldn't be operated under their, under current zoning?
Correct, it's zoned real estate district, so, um, the permitted uses are single-family residential. Um, and then as a conditional use permit, um, what's he, what he's requesting, the non-commercial recreational facility is one of the other uses.
And, and maybe to clarify, we're not approving a site plan tonight, right?
No, um, the, the plat, combining the lots and the right-of-way is the one request the replat. And then the conditional use permit is for the use of the property. Um, the site plan would be reviewed by, um, staff and entities, um, county sanitarian for septic, those sorts of things.
Okay, so, any other comments or questions from the public? Seeing none. Closing that portion. Um, any other questions, Commissioners? I think we're clear. It's rezoning, but not a rezoning, pardon me. Scratch that. A replot and a conditional use permit for a four thousand square foot building on that plot.
I have a question. Don't we normally for, um, request for conditional use, get a drawing of the building? Its height, setbacks, you know, anything like that?
We, we have in the past. Um, the types of conditional use permits we've had in the past are for larger accessory buildings, um, in conjunction with a single-family dwelling. And as a courtesy, um, the applicant has provided site plans showing the setbacks that they meet the city regulations, um, and then elevations, just showing that, that it meets, um, you know, that it matches the exterior of the existing home that's there. This is a little more unique, because it's, he's requesting, uh, a, a private recreational facility. You know, a, a facility for his kids to, to be able to, to play and, and have activities. So it's a little more unique, but, um, he still needs to meet the setback requirements. Um, he doesn't necessarily need to provide a site plan, but he'll need to meet the setback requirements in the R one E district regulations, the height requirements, um, the building material requirements. material requirements. Um, so he'll need to take a building permit out for that, but, but, um, in the past, it's just been provided, um, like I said, as a courtesy, so, um, and again, with the conditional use permit, you can have, um, you can add conditions, um, whatever you, you know, feel comfortable with. I'm not exactly sure what that would, would.
But as far as height and everything goes, that's all covered under the local requirements for improvements.
Covered under the zoning, right, zoning district regulations.
So there isn't any, um, intent to go higher than what the current height?
They wouldn't be able to go higher than what's required, what's under the city ordinance.
So it's the size?
So the size.
We've, we've never approved anything this large.
Right, the, the, um, accessory buildings, um, that have been approved within the area are probably twenty-eight hundred. I think there may have been one that was three thousand up in Selberg's addition further to the north. Um, and usually what we've looked at is an accessory building, um, similar in size to what's already out there. Again, this is a unique situation because it's, it's not an accessory building to a home, it's, it's a private, non-commercial facility, so the wording's a little different. This is, is something unique that we haven't seen before as far as use, but there's wording in the ordinance too, that individuals can apply for conditional use permit for this. So you can limit the size and add that to the conditional use permit requirements.
And what was your thinking about classifying it as a recreational use building? Because as you described that, it sounds like a private membership club, which is not what.
That's what can, can be allowed, but, but we have had, um, applications for accessory buildings, um, in some of the other developments where instead of using it for storage, um, the applicant has used it for an indoor gym for their kids. Um, so that's, I guess, kind of what I was viewing your intent as, um, not something that the public would be coming to use. He's, he's indicated that it's going to be for him. I, I imagine that wording could be added to the conditional use permit, that it's for private use only and not for the public. Um, you know, wording could be added to the conditional use permit, which is recorded against the property. So if there are additional conditions that you would like in the conditional use permit, um, those can be added, whether it's size or to specify that, that the use is primarily for the, the owner or their use and, and not for the public.
One last question, if I may. If this were classified as an accessory use building, would you have a different recommendation? Is, would you see this as outside of what would be, um, consistent with the decisions we've made in the past?
If it was an accessory building, what we've looked at in the past is, um, similar-sized buildings within the area. Um, so size would be whatever's out there, whether it's three thousand square feet or four thousand square feet, um, would need to match the exterior of the home. Those, those are the types of, of things we would look at. And then it, we, we don't allow standalone storage, um, as foreign accessory building. Um, the wording in the R one E district regulations is, um, accessory building, accessory to the primary structure, so, um, he couldn't build a storage building out there and have a standalone storage building because that doesn't meet the requirements for, um, a residential use. Storage is primarily in our heavy commercial and light industrial areas, so, um, what he's proposing is a private recreational use.
With storage. I mean, it does seem to me that it doesn't fit maybe either of these categories and we just don't kind of have a category for that.
Yeah, and I can provide a little bit more, um, kind of background. So, um, as Lisa just mentioned, you know, this is a rural states, this is a, you know, a residential zoning district and so really the only, you know, there may be a couple of other things, but the, the primary, you know, permitted use by right is a, as residence, residential use, single-family dwelling. Um, what is proposed is, what's in the ordinance today is an option for a conditional use permit to allow for this, um, non-commercial recreational facility. The definition of that, you know, is included, I think that's included in your staff report there. Um, I think staff will be the first to admit that language is somewhat subjective and so what we told the applicant is, you know, that, that may, what you're proposing may or may not, you know, meet that definition. Um, you know, what you're proposing, you know, seems to align generally with what the intent is in terms of allowing for, of the private recreational use of the property. Um, and so like Lisa mentioned, if there, this is a conditional use permit and so if there are, what you're approving is the actual use of the property for recreational uses. It's not the building specifically or anything like that. And so if there are, you know, specific design elements or building size requirements or any concerns that the Planning and Zoning Commission has with regards to what, you know, may or may not be built there in the future, those are things that can be added to the approval as a condition. So limiting the size of a building, limiting the height of the building, um, things like that. This is different from, you know, what might at first glance appear similar in, insofar as we, we do have a process for a conditional use permit to allow for larger-sized accessory structures. Uh, as Lisa mentioned, um, an accessory structure is not allowed as a standalone building on a property. An accessory structure by definition has to be associated with a primary structure and so what, um, is being proposed will essentially be the primary structure of, of the, the lot. It's not a accessory structure, um, insofar as the, the term is defined by the zoning code.
And is there a maximum square footage allowed for the, um, private recreational facility? I, I don't recall the, the zoning, but there isn't any particular square footage, so it's not like it is an issue of the square footage exceeding what is in the.
We can, we can look up the, the specifics, but it would be, essentially be the same as any requirements for any house, for example. So there are, um, you know, setback requirements, there are maximum, I think, um, height requirements, um, sorry, what was that? Lot coverage requirements. So this building would need to meet all of those standard requirements of the zoning district, the same as a house would.
Hey, Aaron, can I comment there quicker? Uh, the only other thing that I would say to something like that is there's plenty of land up there, you know, I'm not trying to shoot horn something on there, so, I mean, lot coverage is minimal, there's going to be massive setbacks, there's going to be trees. I don't know, it, it, it seems like it would be, it's, it's, it's own little deal out there and I want to do something right, so.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we have lots of clarifications. Understand it. We have a proposal or a recommendation here. Do we have any motions?
I'll move to approve with the four recommendations noted. Um, not part of the recommendation, but as a side note, it seems like the access issue better be figured out before you start building, but I think what's in front of us tonight is the replat and the conditional use permit and I guess based on these discussions, I'm comfortable making that recommendation on those two items.
Second. It has been moved in second to approve the application, uh, with the four conditions noted by staff. Any further discussion before vote? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Interesting, interesting situation. I thought this was going to be one of the easier ones. What do I know?
The next two are easy.
Well, we already did number eight.
Nine and ten, those are easy.
Oh, yeah. Wait, where's my, thank you. Number nine, are there any non-agenda items?
Oh, shit.
Yes, Aaron?
We do have a couple of non-agenda items, very quick, sorry.
Two?
Just a couple of quick announcements. Uh, the first one, we, we, uh, you may recall having some discussion on the planning needs assessment. Um, we, we, we've got a draft action plan for that.
Aaron, excuse me.
I can't hear.
I'm sorry, we can't hear. Folks, thank you.
Thank you. Um, the, uh, planning needs assessment action plan, we have a draft version of that just about complete and, um, you may or may not recall, it might've been a couple of months ago now that we last talked about the, uh, the planning needs assessment, but the next steps for that, we are hoping to arrange for a brown bag discussion between the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Commission. Uh, that brown bag would take place virtually, um, likely over Zoom or a, a similar platform. Uh, we're still working out some potential dates for that meeting, um, likely, we're, right now we're targeting the end of, uh, January, beginning of February timeframe, hopefully to, to get something scheduled. So you will be seeing some, um, correspondence from, from city staff, um, shortly in regards to, uh, that meeting date and time.
Come on, let's get together, there's no more COVID.
Unfortunately, we didn't budget for the consult.
Zoom stuff, I hate Zoom, I do it all the time.
Aaron, will you give us a couple of weeks heads up on that?
Yes, you will, yep. And so if we need to push it back to give people adequate time, we will do that. Um, and the last item, um, regretfully, I have to inform the Planning and Zoning Commission that Malachi has, uh, taken a position with SRF.
What?
And so this will actually be his last.
You can get our approval, do we get to vote on that or?
Make a motion.
Wait a second, you didn't get approval, where's the application?
So, um, I just want to, you know, state publicly that it's been a joy to, to work with Malachi and, um, his, uh, presence will definitely be missed around City Hall for sure and, uh, I'd like to offer Malachi the, the chance to say a few words as well.
I will miss all of you. I will not miss being here on Tuesday nights. But it's been fun. It's been fun learning little random bits of information here and there and I'm sure I'll see most of you around, but thank you.
Well, good job.
I hope SRF sends you to some other place on Tuesday nights. Oaks or something like that.
Very good. Anything else? Adam ten, adjournment.
Let's do that, I, I move.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.
I'm curious, how they split up Hyde Street.
Well, yeah, here's the thing, this came up in another one. This came up in another one.